No mouse, I don't know what's going on, so I can't function here.
All right, well, we'll manage without using the presentation screen tonight.
Okay. Should we proceed then? Very well. All right. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, it's Monday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is six oh one, and this is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, the twenty-second. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
I have a motion from Trustee Ward to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, why is it? Sorry, thank you. I don't know why I said the twenty-seventh. Maybe I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get closer to my vacation, apparently. All right, very good. So we have, the, the motion has passed then to approve the agenda. So at this time, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anyway, all right, moving on. Public appearances, at this time, the public may address the village board on items that are not on the scheduled agenda. Please present your name and address if you come forward, and then whatever's on your mind, we'd like to hear it. There would be no action taken this evening, however, there may be activity sent back to administration to look at. So anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
I had one thing from a resident on Hidden Pond who couldn't be here tonight. They were just asking to maybe have a speed limit review for Northwood between County M and Whipper Will, where it's forty-five. Just saying they're having issues with dump trucks coming out of the sand pit there, and people are turning that corner, you know, doing forty-five, fifty miles an hour, and the trucks are going ten miles an hour. And the road tends to not de-ice because of the trees over the road. So just looking for a review of that to possibly reduce it to thirty-five.
Do you have contact information?
I do.
Jason, I'll reach out to you and we'll
Okay.
connect.
We can put that on our March Public Health and Safety.
Okay. Are there other items from the audience? All right, very well, hearing none, we will move on to item six, consent agenda. Consent agenda consisting of previous minutes of the village board dated one seventeen twenty-two and one twenty-seven twenty-two, B, Treasurer's, Treasurer's Report, December twenty-twenty-one, Treasurer's Q four twenty-twenty-one, General Fund Budget to Actual Report, Item D, Animal Control Report, December twenty-twenty-one, and Item E, twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three, Poll Worker List Update.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion on the floor from Trustee Eckert to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries six zero. Excellent. Moving on, item number seven. Item A, ARPA Funding Update, Administrator Kaker.
All right, thank you. So last July, I promised an update on ARPA funding once the final rule came out, and I'll go back for a second. So in March of two thousand and twenty, the American Rescue Plan Act, or also known as ARPA, was passed and signed into law. This ultimately gave the village of Swamaco short of one point four million dollars to allocate towards potentially a wide variety of categories related to COVID-nineteen. When it was first passed, it seemed apparent that we would not be able to use this funding for road projects. And then when the interim rule came out last May, it seemed that through some accounting gymnastics that you could use it on roads. And then the final rule, which was published last month, is explicit in confirming that, yes, you can use ARPA dollars on road projects. And when the board talked about these dollars last year, there seemed to be a general consensus that it should be spent on the Lineville Expansion Project. We can certainly still do that, but with the final rule being so broad, by saying that recipients may elect a standard allowance of up to ten million dollars to spend on government services, I just want to make sure that you are aware that other capital expenditures, like buying a fire truck in two thousand and twenty-five, the Calavera Park Master Plan projects, the potential new water tower and water well, and even the Idyllwild Tennis Court and Pickleball Project would be eligible uses for the ARPA dollars. And so I don't need a motion tonight. I just wanted to give the board an opportunity to have an open conversation about what project or projects that you'd be interested in targeting with the ARPA dollars. Another reminder that we do not have to obligate the funds until the end of two thousand and twenty-four and do not have to spend the dollars until the end of two thousand and twenty-six if the board so chooses. So with that, any questions, comments, or thoughts?
Just want to proceed with extreme caution to make sure there's no strings attached.
Yeah, whatever, whatever we decide to do, if we're going to spend any dollars, I'd have our attorney look at it and give us a written summary of what we would be required to do if we spent those dollars, just to make sure that it is an eligible use. The worst thing that could happen is we spend this one point three million dollars and then a couple of years later get audited by the federal government, and we find out, oh, that wasn't a, an allowable use, and now we've got to find that money in our general fund. So we'll definitely check with our attorneys and get a written opinion on what we can and cannot do and what, what strings may be attached.
Or, oh, now we have to do something that we never intended to do.
Right.
So these dollars, these ARPA dollars, who, who distributed them to the village? It didn't come directly from the federal government?
It came directly from the U.S. Treasury.
To
Well, it might, it might have filtered through the state, but
State, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't even ask necessarily for them, it just automatically came.
Yep, very unique program.
Yeah, indeed.
Well, a lot of them, though, the CARES program worked this way too, the CARES funding worked this way as well. So in terms of who, who is the, who is the entity? Well, what I, what I would like to know is, when we go forward with some of these projects like this and we make these decisions, I would like to make it clear, have a clear understanding of who at the state level is our contact point on this. And then as we go through these projects and, and we come to a decision on how we're going to utilize these funds, not only do I want our lawyer to look at it, I, I would like it to go back to that, that consulting body at a state level and, and see if we can get some sort of sign off on them, because, you know, that, that is my worst fear is that going down the road, three years from now, we get audited, and all of a sudden, we have to come up with four hundred thousand dollars because something wasn't eligible for that. That would not be a good thing.
I mentioned it to Elijah, and he's checking into it, but, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know who is the responsible party for ARPA dollars. What happens if we don't use these ARPA dollars?
My understanding, it goes back to the state and/or the U.S. Treasury. And who knows what they're going to do with it?
Right.
I think it's pretty fiscal responsible to utilize these dollars to benefit the community as a whole. And what better way to do that than probably our largest cost upcoming is the Lineville Road Expansion? You know, the fire truck, we have dollars set aside for that. Are we building dollars set aside for that? The Calavera Master Plan benefits some residents, not all. Idyllwild Pickleball Court, same thing. The future water tower and future well benefits those that utilize those, but not the whole community. And so if we utilize these dollars in the appropriate fashion that doesn't even get into gray areas, which is roadwork, I think that the expansion would be an ideal place to put those funds, because it'll reduce any potential borrowing that we will have and possibly no borrowing if things go well with, with our land bank and, and we have the funds there. So that's just my first brief take at it, that how do we utilize these funds in the most appropriate fashion that helps the most amount of people in our village? That would be the way to do it. And there's no gray area.
Well, I disagree with you that water and sewer is, is the whole community, even if not everybody has it in their house. It benefits our businesses and
Well, and I'll give you
It is the whole community, but still very hesitant on using any of it until we've done our homework.
Other discussion from the board members?
I, I like the Lineville Road project, putting the money towards that also. It's, um, it is, it's for everyone out here, you know, that utilizes that. And it's a project that we're doing anyways. And if for some reason it shows up later that it didn't qualify, I mean, it's a project we were going to do anyways. And we, we had money, some money set aside, and we were going to borrow the rest. And so one way or another, that, that's the place to put it. It's not like we're doing something extra.
So you had mentioned that the, the declaration, in terms of how we're going to use this, is due by two thousand and twenty-four?
Correct.
We have the balance of this year and next year?
Correct.
To determine what to do with those funds?
I would want to, I would want to have that sooner, just because we're going to have to borrow for it, and we'll want to know exactly how much we're borrowing for, but, yes.
So where are these funds right now?
Where, which funds?
The one million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand?
We have it, Director Lee Joyce can speak directly to that one.
The funds are kept in a segregated money market account at Fortified Bank.
Okay. So as long as we don't use those funds, it's, I'm sure it's, it's an insignificant, well, at that level of money, it's probably more significant than I would think in terms of what it's actually yielding. It's like point five percent or something?
The yields are pretty low on money markets right now. I think it's zero point four four percent if you look at that one-page Treasurer's Report. We get up to one point five percent based on our contract on some of our funds.
So I guess the point is, you know, you know, when, when we look at this declaration of use, we don't have to declare that until two thousand and twenty-four, and we've got almost two years. You know, there's a lot of other things that could come up that might be able to finance some things here and, and supplement this. So to me, I look at this money as kind of, at least in the short term, for the balance of two thousand and twenty-two, I look at it, look at it as kind of like backup.
Yeah, like an insurance plan.
Like an insurance plan.
I really agree with Dan. That's been my sentiment all along, that a lot of these can be adjusted, or, you know, we could choose not to do them, or we could put them off. But the Lineville Road Expansion is one we don't have a choice for, and it's been that, you know, that scary, you know, budget item that's coming up, that how is that going to impact everybody? And when we talk about everybody, it's every taxpayer would benefit if we find a way to not have to, to borrow to make this happen. If, if the, everything aligns right and we can use mitigation bank money and these funds to pay for that and not borrow for it, it would be, it would be spectacular that some of those debt numbers we have should surely come down.
Alex, when is the next benchmark event for the Lineville, or Alex, or Andy? What's the next phase?
So they're still in the design phase, and then the next phase will be acquisition of, right away, I believe, Andy, is there?
So I have a meeting coming up, and I think it's next week, we're going to be at the sixty percent design mark with the project. After planning and design here, probably for the most part of this year, yes, and next year, there'll be some more field work, some land acquisition, and then from there, the following year is construction of the first phase.
And they're using traditional construction methods? We're not using a bunch of green initiatives and things like that? It's concrete and blacktop?
Yep.
So, I mean, those are real costs, so we'll know, we'll know real costs or projected costs without putting out for bid soon?
I'd say in the next several months, yes.
Okay. And then when is that slated to start again?
Two thousand and twenty-four.
Two thousand and twenty-four, so, you know, to your point, we have through two thousand and twenty-four to allocate these funds, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. So, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll be well into construction by then, so.
And if things do go awry, you can't use the money, we have to pay out loans. Like, Trustee Andrews said, we were going to take out loans anyway. If we were to pay for some of the other things, if we weren't planning on doing any kind of loans for that, if we spent it and then had to pay it back, so I'm, I'm awful for the
Anything else? All right, thank you.
I think what I'll do is I'll reach out to town council and have them start looking at this, let them know that this is what we're thinking of doing, and see if they have any, any red flags. And I'll also reach out to our contacts at the state and see if there's anybody who's willing to sign off on a project. I don't think they're going to go that far, but at least talk to our state representatives that can give us a little more assurance that, yes, this is appropriate.
There won't be, you're right, there won't be anybody at the state level who would sign off on a decision that we make here at, at the village level, but there would be a contact who, who may provide a review. And to your point, making our representatives, and to your point, Trustee Eckert, making our representatives aware of what we're using this for, you know, that puts them on notice as well, in case we need them on our quarter to later date. Okay?
Gallagher's office would be another
Yep.
Yeah, just let them know what we're up to.
All right, very good. Moving on, item number eight, Public Works and Utilities Items, two thousand and twenty-two Capital Road Project Director Smits.
Thank you. On January twenty-fifth, we opened bids for the two thousand and twenty-two Road Reconstruction Project. These roads were put together by the committee last fall, and you guys authorized staff to prepare plans and specs and let the project out to bid. We received two bids for the project, one from Northeast Asphalt and one from MCC, which is pretty typical. We received the lowest bid from Northeast Asphalt for a price of one million, fifty-eight dollars, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty and sixty-one cents. After we reduced the developer-funded projects off of that, that'll put us down to around the hundred, eight hundred and sixty thousand, which was the budgeted threshold for this year. There is a few extra projects that we added that will be utilized, the eight sixty will be utilized for. Northwoods Road is the majority of that, so Northwoods Road, south of White Pine, where you go over or down the, the hill, there's a, some guard rail and a crosspipe there, and the curb is really settling bad there. So that part we added, and then also some wedging from the sand pit north on Northwoods Road. It's getting severely rutted there, and it's been on our list for several years now, and we try to pick a road or two to add some asphalt to that's, it's like a Band-Aid. It's a glorified Band-Aid that gives you anywhere from five, six, seven years of additional life, knowing the conditions of the road and the use of the land, you know, that's affecting the road. So we kind of didn't think it made sense to spend additional funds at this time to fully rebuild that road until that sand pit's completely closed down, and there's going to be no more trucks hauling out of there. So we weren't given a straight answer on the timing of that, but we figure it's probably around ten years or so that that's probably going to be used as a sand pit. So at that point, we'd fully rebuild Northwoods Road, but for now, we'd, we'd want to just wedge it and get it safer than it currently is. It's pretty rutted in some areas, and if you got a vehicle that doesn't have a lot of clearance, or if you get water in those ruts, you know, it poses a potential hazard to users of the road. So, and we've wedged a handful of other roads over the last five, six years, and they seem to be really holding up. So, yeah, tonight, we'd be looking for approval on the award of Contract S, sexy, twenty-two seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two roadway reconstruction project, rather than twenty-two oh-two, to Northeast Asphalt for a price of one million, dollars, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty and sixty-one cents.
Can you just give a quick, a quick synopsis on your page summary contract?
Yep.
Which ones are, are developer-funded?
Hang on, so the Stino Road is going to be a developer-funded project and Chambers Hill Farm subdivision, the surface layer of asphalt for that is also. So if you look at the table below, we broke it down to capital cost, which is resurfacing village roadways. So that total price for, or bid price is nine, about nine hundred and thirty-six thousand. We are receiving eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for LRIP funding this year. So the nine thirty-six deducted of the eighty-seven, plus the twenty-eight eight, the engineering estimate and legal cost, we're going to be at about eight seventy-eight. We know we'll see a little bit of savings with some EBS and some other bid items, or unit items that we have in the bids. That we should, we'll get down to about eight sixty. And what we usually do is we get it down to wherever we can, and that's how much we wedge. So we, maybe we can't spend sixty thousand on wedging, we'll knock it down and make sure we only put enough asphalt down that we're spending fifty thousand. So we make sure we resurface all the roads, you know, that are up, being rebuilt, and then we wedge the rest if there's any available. Some years there isn't, and some years there is. Hopefully this year, there's enough to take on the majority of Northwoods Road there, north of the sand pit.
Is there more activity with that sand pit between Jason saying that there's been complaints of speed and?
I think it's normal hauling activity out of the pit, I mean, normal dump truck.
Have they done any damage to anything we've redone?
As far as roads that we've resurfaced?
Yeah.
No, they, really, they're only supposed to haul north out of Northwoods, and it is classified as a truck route, so they are allowed to use it.
Okay.
I don't think it was built as a truck route, you know, back when Northwoods was initially constructed. But, you know, they had the conditional use to use the sand pit there, and it kind of is what it is.
But they haven't wrecked anything we've redone?
No.
Okay.
In Northwoods there, I mean, you guys know it kind of goes through a swamp and some wetter, but outlined conditions. And when it gets resurfaced for this, you know, once it's actually reconstructed, some EBS will be factored into that, and we'll try to enhance the subgrade there, so we see a longer term on that roadway.
Just exciting seeing where we've come, even since you've been on board, Andy.
Definitely.
You know, dealing with a budget of three, four hundred thousand dollars, and, and now we're, you know, nearing a million, you know, we're getting to where we need to be
Yeah.
to make sure that we're keeping our roads up, up to par. So it's good to see, I know it's, can be taxing on the taxpayers, that hundred thousand dollars extra every year, but it's imperative to, to keep up our roads.
I think too, for taxpayers to know that we're budgeting ahead of time for it, and we're not borrowing, we're not paying interest on all these roads as we lay them down, we're, we're budgeting ahead of time. So, yeah, it hurts a little, but it doesn't hurt as much as paying for nothing, so.
Right.
And it's also the recovery process on this, right? Because when many of us got on this board, roads were, were borrowed for, that's how roads were paid for. And that added up to a significant amount of debt here in the village of Swamaco. And then we made a concerted decision, what, seven years ago? Something like that, where we started adding a hundred thousand dollars to go ahead and build up our road fund, and it's finally starting to pay off.
And we throw in extra stuff, that little money's here and there, throw it in this one, throw it in the vehicle replacement. There's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to approve Contract S twenty-two one-seven, two thousand and twenty-two roadway reconstruction project to Northeast Asphalt for the bid price of one million, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-one cents.
All right. We have a motion on the floor from Trustee Schneider to approve the Contract S two-two one-seven dash two zero two-two, the roadway reconstruction project to Northeast Asphalt for the bid price of one million, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-one cents. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
We have a second from Trustee Rodden to this motion. Is there any further discussion from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, moving on. Item B, eight B, Dormwater Pond Dredging, Director Smits.
Thank you again. The village bid out two ponds to be dredged for two thousand and twenty-two. We received our open bids February first for that project. We received five bids from area contractors that were interested in performing the work. The contractor to be awarded the project would like to get going soon, so that's why I did add it to tonight's meeting, rather than waiting. So the lowest bid came in from Best Enterprises for a price of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. So that includes dredging both the ponds at the corner of Northwoods Road and Winding Ridge and the pond behind Saputo Cheese. They are to remove the sediment from both ponds and also install riprap around the pond at the Winding Ridge location. So tonight, I would be looking to award the Pond Dredging Project to Best Enterprises for a base price of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, using funds from the Pond Cleaning Sinking Fund. And just to note, there may be an additional cost for some extra riprap, depending on how it all comes out. Sometimes there's depressions or ruts or things in the bank, so you can't quite factor it in the bid, but it's a unit price per ton, so if we need a few extra ton, it's twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents per ton. And we just pay the price on that unit price for when they add it, so.
Do you work with them?
We have not, they are a new contractor to us. I haven't heard anything bad about them, so we have no reason to reject them at this point. So we'll give them a go ahead and
They're out of the pure, right?
Yep.
Yeah, they're good people.
Yep.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So the Winding Ridge Pond, that's the one that has the, call it drive-up, so we can suck out of it if we need to for our fire trucks?
Mm-mm.
That's not the one off of Northwoods?
Northwoods and Winding Ridge, it's on the southwest corner of that intersection.
Yeah, there is a driveway. There's a driveway off of Northwoods.
Shouldn't be for a dry, or a dry hydrant.
That's what I've been told by the people of Winding Ridge, that, that it's been always
No way, there's no water, I mean, there's not. You'd suck
We don't, we don't, yeah, we don't
No, you don't, you don't use it, but that's
Really, I mean, I'll look into, I'd never, I don't think there's a dry well there, or a dry hydrant there.
I don't think there's any, I think that he put a pipe in the thing. Yeah, that's what I was told.
Interesting.
Because there were some issues with that pond several years ago about cutting fragmites around it and everything else, so. I got a history lesson back then.
Always good.
We don't, we don't have any, like, dog fences or
This one, these two ponds should go a little smoother than the one we did last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
A little shelter or
There's a hot tub.
So a question on this? So the dredgings from these ponds, I, I take it the contractors obviously held that away?
So, but we've, if you remember, about two months ago, we had Bay Strategies, Bay Environmental Strategies test the sediment over at Saputo Cheese, because it's got more than fifteen percent industrial development. So the sediment tested negative for anything positive, so, I said that right. We do not have to land fill any of that material, it can all be just land applied. So both ponds, we're going to just take over at one of our piece of lands and our properties and just de-water it, let it dry out, and then basically just rake it all out and throw some grass seed on it, just like the pond we did last year at
Okay.
behind Moose Creek.
Thank you.
Yep.
So if there's no other discussion, I would look for a motion.
I'll recommend awarding the Pond Dredging Project to Best Enterprises for the base price of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-four, seventy-two cents, using funds from the Pond Cleaning Sinking Fund. And then there are some additional costs to cover for the riprap around the bank for a Winding Ridge Pond.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Ward to recommend awarding the Pond Dredging Project to Best Enterprises for a total of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, with the proviso that there could be additional charges for potential riprap to repair damage. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Trustee Schneider. Any further discussion from the board or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Eight C, two thousand and twenty-two, Street Sweeper Purchase, Director Smits.
Thank you again. All right, last year during the budget cycle or Budget Day, we talked about the purchasing of a street sweeper. This is important to the village and to our MS four permit and just, you know, the overall aesthetics of the village, keeping our curb areas swept and clean and free of debris. Currently, we're paying a outside company to sweep our curb. We're paying about five thousand dollars every time he comes out, and we're getting okay service, it's nothing great. We'd like to definitely have control of it and the timing of it. We should be sweeping, you know, at a minimum, three times a year, depending on conditions and, and, you know, rainfall or wind, and you could do it more. The more time spent sweeping, you know, ultimately reduces the amount of sediment that binds its way into our stormwater facilities. We budgeted enough money to get a good used sweeper, and we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I did not know that there was such a demand for sweepers out there, but there is, and there's like none available. So there's one unit that we could get our hands on through McQueen Equipment. They get all, they are a new dealer as well, so, you know, they're, these units they're selling are what they're getting in on trade. And this unit he has coming in is a two thousand and twelve. I'm very hesitant to just jump in and buy it, it's a lot of money. I, but I don't know if we have any other options. I mean, they fully go through them, they inspect them, I attached, like an example of what they do when they get it back in on trade. I mean, you're buying, you know, the unit has twenty thousand miles on it and five, forty-five hundred hours or so, which isn't, you know, it's enough, but it's not that much. They should go for six, seven thousand hours, no problem. They have good John Deere engines in them and stuff like that, but, you know, it's something that you're buying used, you just kind of never know. It's the uncertainty of not really getting to see it or put your hands on it, you know, before you commit to it. But the insurance that they offer is they fully inspect these things, they go through them from top to bottom, put together that report that I have in there, for example, and then they repair anything that is, you know, faulty or put together that report that I have in there, for example, and then they repair anything that is, you know, faulty or not functioning correctly.
No warranty then?
I think, he might have had a one-year warranty on, so I have to, I'd have to verify that, though, I couldn't, I can't remember. So this would be the unit that's coming from, I can't remember where it's coming from, somewhere down in Illinois, I believe. So it's, it's the newer chassis style, which is good, it's got the full glass windshield, there's no bar or split in the middle. It's supposed to have the upgraded interior as far as the ride and making sure it's quiet, or some of the old ones were not so nice to ride in, if anybody has any experience in them, but it's about the newest that we're gonna get for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we looked in eBay and Google search and Facebook Marketplace sweepers for a couple of days here, and I called places from California to Wyoming. And I was told that this unit here for a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty is a good buy, from other dealers that deal with taking in sweepers, refurbishing them and selling them. You know, I don't know what the answer is, if we pull the trigger on this and get it and run it for ten years and if it's, and you're still gonna get something back out of it in ten years and at that point we upgrade it to a different one or a newer one. Or we wait, we definitely could wait on it and maybe budget some more money for a newer model next year. But no matter what, it sounds like you gotta jump early on these things. This one here, if we ordered it tomorrow or agreed to purchase it tomorrow, it'd probably be here in sometime like May. So they're not getting it in until March on their trade-in. And then by that time, they go through it all and get it over to us, it'd be April, April, Mayish.
Do you think it's got ten years in it? I see they've done quite a bit on it.
What do you mean? No, so that, that is an example of a different sweeper.
Oh, okay, you mean the inspection form?
That's just an example of what they do to this unit when they.
I'm like, wow, they did a lot of stuff to this thing.
Yeah. You know, that's all factored in on his sale price to us for the hundred and twenty-four, seven fifty. So no matter what it comes, they have a number built in on their price. You know, so if it comes in in good condition, they only gotta spend five thousand on it, that's all they spend, they make more money. But if it needs something more, like that one had like twenty-nine, it was upper twenties, for thousands of dollars that they stuck back into the unit, I think was the total, you know, that's money, I guess you could say, they're not losing money on anything, but, you know, that's the price, that's, they factor that in on their sale price. Because they're not gonna come back to me and say, oh, well, we found X, Y, Z wrong with this, so now your price is gonna be one forty because we had to replace something major. You know, our price is gonna be one seven, one twenty-four, seven fifty.
Their idea of major.
Right. Yep. But again, that's, I don't mean, unless you buy a brand-new one, this is probably what you're gonna go through, no matter what you buy. And a brand-new unit's like two hundred and fifty thousand. I'd, I'd like one.
But you don't.
I mean, we could definitely continue contract, no, it's not that we have to have this unit.
You said it's five thousand a year?
It's about five thousand a year, I didn't get a price for this year yet, so I'm sure it went up again, but.
You could do basically twenty-five years with five thousand.
If it stays at five, and we only did it once a year, yeah.
We could recoup some of the costs on this. A lot of times we do call the county out to do sweet street sweeping after an accident, because of all the glass and everything. So that would be a billable expense, because we do charge for the car accidents, so just an FYI on that.
Good point.
Does that bill out if we, if we use manual labor versus a machine, are those billable rates different?
We would have to determine the rate, what it would be.
Okay.
We, we charge for any services that we provide for automobile accident.
That's.
But we don't currently, because of the county and us being different entities, we don't bill for their time.
So can we do this subject to an, an engine inspection? To make sure that this engine has proper.
Compression.
Compression?
I mean, I would sure think that's part of their, it's gotta be in that, as part of their inspection. And I can certainly ask them tomorrow, if they say no, well, then, no deal.
Yeah, I would, I would feel better.
Maybe I'll get a better, I'll ask for some more information on exactly the engine test methods that they use. I mean, again, it's just something that we would like to have here so that we can offer, you know, a little bit better of a service on sweeping our curbed areas and doing it more than once a year. Something that we can definitely get by without, we've gotten by without them for many years already. It's just nice to have that under your own control and be able to do it as needed rather than when this guy can get here in the spring.
And your, your estimate, I mean, if we're doing it three ti- three to four times, we should be doing it.
Yep.
I mean, we're just throwing money away too, and, yeah, that cost is gonna go up every year too.
Right.
So it's five thousand dollars per year?
Per ti- per site, per round.
Per round?
Yeah, so it is, we have about, we have about, but we only do it once a year, because that's all.
Because it's five thousand dollars round?
Yep.
So if we have our own machine, we would be doing it three times a year?
We have about thirty-four mile, well, it's gonna be more now, in fact, during the new chambers, but we had prior to Chambers Hill, about thirty-four miles, centerline miles of curbed roads.
That we would be sweeping?
That we would be sweeping, yes.
So then you, that's times two, right?
Yes, well, yeah, that's centerline miles, yep.
Three times a year, right?
Yep.
And how long does it take to make one complete?
So the guy that had been doing it, his equipment had a lot of issues because it was older, so it'd take him about two weeks. But we had a guy prior to him that went, sold his business, and he could do it almost in a week. He figured, he always charged us about forty hours worth of time, and he did it in a week. But he'd work longer days, of course, than two. So I'd say, you know, four, five, six days, I mean, it'll take a little bit, a learning curve to do it ourselves. But I'd say within a week, we should be able to do our own.
Well, and the flexibility that allows us to do is, let's say worker X, every Monday, that's what he's doing on Mondays. You know, so if there's other things to be done, he doesn't need to be a whole week's worth of it. You know, it's our machine, we can operate it whenever then.
It's a, it's a lot of money, and I know that, and I hate buying and jumping into things without even getting to see the darn thing in person, you know, because they're out in Menominee Falls and not getting it, but you basically have to commit to it to get this particular unit. And he, I mean, he showed me his, whatever his spreadsheet worked, but they don't have any other units coming in either this year. So if we don't jump on this one, it's gonna be a while, but, I mean, we can definitely live without it again and come back and revisit it next year too.
Who is, I'm assuming that the Howard Swamaco School District has a sweeper come in from time to time as well?
I'm not sure what they do down there.
Then maybe something else that we can contract some of this out and.
And they may have Howard doing theirs.
Right, well, and that was one other question, you know, can we hire Howard?
Ah, we could, potentially, I don't know if we could hire them. I know that, I just, I went down and looked at their unit, so they have a twenty eighteen identical to this one. And they struggled last year to get even two times around Howard because they just ran short on staff time and everything else. And I wouldn't want to rent their machine out with our guys, if we would have them do it, we'd want their staff to do it.
Okay.
So I have a, so, you know, and I'm kind of sitting here playing with these numbers a little bit, and I look at this, so this, this piece of, and I'm somewhat familiar with this, actually, this is an Elgin Pelican, and I used to work for a company in Pulaski that we actually did the electric, the electrical harnesses for these. But as I'm looking at this, so this, this piece of equipment is approximately ten years old. And in that ten years, it had twenty thousand, five hundred miles and four thousand, eight hundred hours. So that would work out to about two thousand, fifty miles per year and two hundred and forty hours per year. So breaking that down even a little bit further, that's about eight and a half miles of sweeping per hour. So I guess what I'm getting at, and then if we look at what we're doing here, and we're gonna do thirty-five miles, three times a year, that's a hundred and two miles per year. And I'm not sure what the hours would be on that. I guess I'm just, I'm sort of questioning, you know, was this, I'm wondering if this piece of equipment was idle for a number of years, potentially?
Yeah.
Not, I don't know if it matters or not, but a question to ask, I mean, that might mean that we're getting a machine that really doesn't have as, you know, many miles on it, or if it was taken out of service, just because, you know, those numbers seem, seem pretty small compared to what we're looking at. And then if we look at the return on investment here, or the payback that we look at here, if it's five thousand dollars a year and we're gonna be doing it three times a year here, so fifteen thousand dollars, so in eight point three years, we would have this vehicle pointed off, or basically would have paid for itself. Would you envision after that time, you know, perhaps getting a new vehicle, a new sweeper? Or is the idea to, like, like I treat my cars, run it into the dirt?
I would probably put like a ten-year useful life on this unit and hopefully get some value to it yet, after that ten years, and then sell it, and then upgrade again. You don't wanna keep it too long, because if you let it go too far down its road, then it's not gonna be worth much.
So I would just, if it would be, and I don't expect you to come back with an answer, but just to ask the question, you know, and play with the numbers, or you and I can talk, and maybe I'm, you know, making something out of nothing, but just from what I'm seeing.
You do it once now?
Correct.
Why three times instead of two?
Well, you just try to do a spring, a midsummer, and a fall cleanup. Try to catch it in the spring. You, I mean, definitely, it depends on weather conditions too, I mean, if you get a lot of rain, you know, here and there where you got a lot of sediment being washed into your curb, if you have a lot of construction activity in certain areas, you're gonna need to hit those areas more because of erosion and sediment loss from, you know, disturbance of, of land. But you should be doing it spring, you know, at least midsummer, and then in the fall before, before or right after leaf season. And get all that, you know, natural material out of your curbs that is gonna eventually make its way to the, to our stormwater facilities and then decay and decompose.
What is your projection of how much it's gonna save us, the whole idea, so it doesn't go into the sewers and stuff like that?
Well, I didn't calculate all that out, just bigger act and ponds and dredging.
That would be the thing, is if, if it's gonna save you in the long run that way, then you can justify the, the buying of it, you know?
I would say on a, in a spring with the individual that was sweeping for us, we would usually haul in, I wanna say like around twenty-two yards of, twenty-two to twenty-five yards of material. Right.
Where are you, so, two, two more things, so we, not only can we charge, so it becomes a revenue stream, right? We can charge for accident cleanup, but also those areas where trucks are coming in and out, or there's a construction site, and we warn them once, we warn them twice, and we come out there with our unit and clean it up and, and bill them for it, so. And so there is bill, there is billable hours potentially on this unit too, and, and I think the flexibility for our staff to use it whenever they need is an added benefit. I mean, right now, we don't have that luxury, right? The guy comes from wherever he comes, gets his stuff done and he leaves. Now, you know, tomorrow afternoon, if we needed it for whatever, it's available, it's another piece, it's another tool in our toolbox. So, um, just one more thing, so the spoils, what are we doing with the spoils right now?
Right now, we, our landfill, I'm done, we were taking them to.
Oh, we are landfilling them, okay, good.
So just one other thing on this, you know, when we were talking about, when we had all the discussions about ATVs and the roads, one of the concerns was gravel that splatters up on the road. You know, to me, when you're, when you're getting, to me, this is providing an added level of service to the community by keeping the roads clean. And really what I come down to is if there's nothing strange with the number of hours and miles, you know, the payoff on this being eight point three years and the assumed life being ten years. So, okay, that, you know, you're, you're providing service to the community, so I guess from my standpoint, it makes sense to me.
I think where that eight, eight point three years is falling short, though, is that we're not considering the loaded wage of operation, the maintenance on that, the depreciation of the machine as we, as we utilize it over that period of time. As much as I appreciate the added benefit of having it at that price tag, I, I would almost just wait a couple of years and see, I mean, right now, everything is so high. Just wait to see if we can't realize some savings by waiting a couple of years. Even if we did pay the, we did get it done through a service three times a year right now, I think when you start putting in loaded wage and depreciation and maintenance and all that other stuff, at that price tag, oof, I just, and it's something we're planning on selling in, in ten years, I.
And not knowing what you're getting.
I'm not even putting in paper, just in my mind, I can't seem to make it work out where that financially makes sense. I get the benefit, we have services we offer that sometimes we know we're losing to offer, but at that price tag, I just don't.
I, I guess I kind of agree, it's a bit uncertain. It's, it's kind of an old piece of equipment already.
And I know it's just a guess, any thought on that, like, because there's so many things right now that are just record-high prices. Are, I, I'd hate to see, you know, we have some economic downturn here and two years later, this would have been eighty. I, I just.
I, I have to admit, that's a good point, I didn't think of that.
And then we.
When you look at the price of used cars and how much they cost now, why would it be any different than an Elgin sweeper? I mean, that's a very good point.
And a pickup truck goes for a hundred thousand dollars, just a pickup truck.
And the fact that you have some uneasiness about the way this has to work out, I just think right now we have something that's, although it's not the greatest, it's not broke. And we would just kick this one down the road a couple of years and continue to go with our service until we can have more time to maybe find something you can put your hands on before we purchase it to. I know this, the whole thing makes me feel a little uneasy.
That's fair, I mean, I definitely don't prefer buying something used that has got this many moving parts. That's, again, I've, I just, I've reached out anywhere that I could find a sweeper and who had it, and basically, everybody, everybody that sells them is in the same boat. They don't have many, and the ones they get are sold before they get them. So you have to commit to something used that you can't really go get to look at prior.
There's usually a reason why they're selling it.
I know, to share a story, I was gonna purchase a new skid steer to replace mine. And I found one online, it was down in Illinois, exact one I wanted, it was only four years old. It was thirty thousand dollars, and I called them up and said, do you still have that? And they said, no, we decided to scrap it, there's too many problems with it. And I would have, I would have purchased that sight on scene and went down there and picked it up and had that problem that now I have to deal with and try to fix everything, and if a company is scrapping it, I just can't imagine what was wrong with it. So, I mean, that's my only thing that's making me feel uneasy about something that you don't get to thoroughly go through before we purchase it and.
Yeah, I mean, you're taking their, their word and their inspection reports.
Right.
As your, you know, insurance line that it's gonna work and function as needed.
I don't, I don't know anything of the company, I trust you, I don't trust them, so.
And, and you know, I guess you could keep your eyes open if something does, or something else.
I mean, I, the unfortunate part is.
And you were.
Wait and budget for a new one, which would be ideal, and that way we know we're gonna get something that probably has a much longer than ten-year useful life. It's just you're tucking an extra hundred and, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that same, for that unit. But maybe, your resale then also is gonna be much higher.
So I just actually texted a guy that I know that does a lot of purchasing of this kind of equipment. I'll touch base with you later. I, I just texted him to say, hey, do you see these in your searches and?
And maybe we, I can certainly keep up to date with McQueen on the equipment that they get. If they have one coming in, you know, maybe mid or late this year, we can revisit the unit at that time.
Doesn't hurt.
The money's not gonna go anywhere, that's in the, you know, it's called out for this purchase, so we can just save it there until the time is right.
So do you still need a motion?
I do not need a motion, nope.
Re-tabling this, moving this back, okay, very good. All right, so let's move on, item D, eight D, well number four, rehab project, Director Smiths.
All right, last year, we had our municipal water supply engineer from the DNR out, and she wrote in our sanitary survey that we should be looking to have well for rehab. It has not been done since the well was built in two thousand and twelve, I believe. So it's something that should be done on a ten-year interval. So we bid out this year the work, I invited three contractors to bid on the work, we received two bids, one from CTW Corporation and one from Municipal Well and Pump. CTW is the lowest price for thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. So we'd be looking to award the well for rehab work to CTW Corporation for the well for rehab of the cost of not to exceed thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Just quickly and very generally, what, what does a rehab entail?
So they're gonna just pull the pump and the motor and inspect everything and go through, they'll airburst the well. As it goes down, they'll bail out the debris, they'll clean everything up, they'll do a video log of it, make sure everything looks good. They'll go through the motor and they'll go through the pump as well and just kind of inspect everything. And then we just need to install an air vent at the top of the well casing as well. That wasn't DNR, it wasn't a requirement from the DNR when it was constructed, but it is now a requirement, so they'll install that as well.
Is that the one on Elvira?
Harbor Lights.
Oh.
Harbor Winds, sorry.
Harbor Winds, okay. That one has treatment, doesn't it?
Correct, that has softening, yep, or ion exchange.
Does that make it more complicated?
Nope, that, this, this is dealing with just the, the water, the well itself and the components of the well, and they're just gonna go through everything and make sure everything is, you know, working efficiently and we have maximized pumping capacity out of that well. So everything has been prior to the ion exchange systems.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll probably do the work here, I'd say, another, like, March, April-ish, if the weather warms up enough. You know, we gotta open the hatch in the roof to pull everything out with a crane, so we don't want it to be too cold out when we're doing that, but we wanna do it before we get to spring rush of, you know, people getting outside and using a lot of water.
And it's all impact fees?
Uh, this is gonna be operating budget, it's rehab, well for rehab. Uh, this is gonna be operating budget, it's rehab, well-for-rehab.
Okay.
Impact fees can only be used for new capital.
New things, okay.
I'll make a motion to award the project to CWW.
CTW.
TW Corporation for the well number four rehab project for a cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Motion on the floor by trustee Rotten to award the project to CTW Corporation for the well number four rehab in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars, is there a second?
Second.
A second from trustee Andrews. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, thank you. And to wrap up the Director Smiths show, item E, well number five.
He'll be back later.
Thank you. Uh, the test well contract for the future well number five. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting with Ayers and Associates to go over the well number five project. Ayers was, um, the selected consultant that the village is gonna use for the, uh, well five project. Uh, we decided, uh, after, during the kickoff meeting, we kinda decided to split the whole project up and and make it into phases or segments so that we can get through the first phase, evaluate where we're at, and present all findings and analysis to the Public Works Committee and to you guys, and then proceed from there. Uh, so this is kinda gonna cover phase one of the overall well five project. So, Ayers has supplied a contract, uh, that would be up for you guys tonight to make a motion to sign for the village to engage in and provide services for this test well, uh, at the Northwoods site. Uh, following the test well data, Ayers will come to a Public Works meeting in here and again, present everything, and then we'll make a plan from there. Um, they'll present cost estimates and the next steps and, you know, kind of a timeline on things after we get through this year. So, the village had budgeted about a hundred, or a hundred thousand for this year and four hundred and twenty-six thousand for next year for these services and engineering work to investigate the property out there and to evaluate if it's a suitable site for a high-capacity well that would service our needs. Uh, so they'll be doing that, and they'll also be getting the ball rolling with other agencies such as the PSC, the DNR, and the EPA. Uh, some of those approvals need to be done before the test well can even be installed into the ground or or built. So, Ayers will be conducting those communications and submittals on behalf of the village along, you know, with our input here at the staff level. Uh, the expenses for this project for phase one should all be covered by impact fees. So, the Ayers contract for phase one is seventy-nine thousand dollars and, or seventy-nine thousand and fifteen dollars. Uh, and the estimate for the test well is anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand, and then the permanent well would be four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand, so the test well will happen this year. And what we'll, we'll do is, in the bid of the, of this project, we're gonna have a bid item in there for the permanent well as well, as well. So, if, uh, everything goes well, there was a lot of wells in here. Anyways, uh, if everything goes good and the analysis is positive, uh, the same contractor will drill the permanent well probably next spring in twenty twenty-three. Uh, so that's kinda how the timing should shake out on it. Uh, but at the end of this year, we should know if the site's capable of producing the water we need, we'll know the water quality there, so we'll know if we have to have treatment or not, and that'll all come from this phase one analysis put together by Ayers. And with that, uh, we'd be looking to approve the contract that Ayers has attached. Uh, one other thing, as I did send it over to our legal counsel, and there was two items that they recommended we removed, I haven't removed that on your uh, or the, one of the attachments that's up here, but I sent it back to Ayers, and they have, are, they're checking on it to make sure that they're good with the deletions that, uh, our attorney recommended.
Refresh my memory quick, did we put this out for bid?
So, we went and advertised it and had seven consultants submit, uh, RFPs for
Okay, we did.
The well work, and we narrowed it down to two, uh, we narrowed it down to McMahon and Ayers, and then Fred and myself, Fred Kemberger from the Public Works Utility Committee, we kind of evaluated and put an analysis together and a ranking schedule and kind of scored each one, and, uh, we came, it came down to the two, and and then Ayers ultimately had a much better price than McMahon uh, for this, a very similar scope of work, and we selected to go with Ayers that road.
That's what I thought you did, I just, that's good information to have.
So, what is the amount we're actually approving this evening?
Well, for sure, it's the seventy-nine thousand and fifteen dollars for the Ayers contract. So, once everything's bid out and we receive bids for the test well work and and the permanent well, then, uh, we'll bring that back to you guys for approval of the actual construction work at that time. But for tonight, it's just the contract with Ayers for the.
Seventy-nine thousand and fifteen dollars.
Yep.
So, um, just a request for whomever makes that motion, if you could include that number.
Offer a motion to approve the contract brought forth by Ayers and Associates uh, to start the test well project using impact fees to fund the work at a total cost of seventy-nine thousand fifteen dollars. Uh, one other note, um, for phase one, uh, one other note, um, pending legal final review.
Perfect.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor by trustee Rotten and seconded by trustee Schneider. The motion to approve the contract brought forth by Ayers and Associates to start the test well project with fees not to exceed seventy-nine thousand fifteen dollars. Uh, this is for phase one, and this is also pending final legal review and approval. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries zero. Thank you. All right, uh, item number nine, Fire Department Items Ordinance two-two-zero-zero-two, an ordinance creating four point six of the Swamaco Village Code related to emergency management, second reading, Chief Bertler.
All right, I'll give Andy a break for a second, so. All right, so this is the second reading of the code, uh, this code establishes the emergency management director duties and roles um, along with the, who's on the emergency management committee, um, and then the duties and roles of the village board as well, so. Uh, last time you asked me to contact, or some surrounding villages of when they had this in place, um, and I put that list below. Um, Howard updated theirs in two thousand and twenty, but it was on the books previous to that, and then Bellevue, Alway, Wrightstown, and Plaskiell have it on their books as well, so, um, I'll kind of put the blame on the fire department. Um, this is usually the emergency manager actor falls under the fire department for the most part, um, or usually the fire chief, so something that was probably should have been done back some time ago, so.
Okay, so there's been no changes from the first reading?
Correct, yep.
So, we basically, um, eh, when an emergency is declared on the county or the state or federal level, we just kind of follow suit with that?
Yes, and well, you, you have to declare it locally first. Um, in order, yes, the, this, the governor ultimately has the control over the state, the county executive would have control over the county, but you can declare a local emergency as well, so, yes. It, it varies on the situation, um, and what it is, but you could declare, like I said, a local emergency here first um, without Brown County declaring one, but if Brown County declares one, that covers the entire Brown County, the state declares one, or if the president declares one, it covers the entire nation.
Does, um, does this improve our local control or let some of it go?
It, I would say neither, um.
Okay.
It dispels it out, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
We have an emergency management plan, we've had it for a very long time, we do have operating policies in a separate handbook that talk about emergency management, this is just putting it in our ordinances, making it clear for everyone to see what the process actually looks like. We've been surviving without it, we would continue to survive without it, but it's nice to have that in your ordinances.
It also defines what the emergency manager director can do and can't do with the village board, where the funds are appropriated, that type of stuff, so.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-zero-zero-two, Emergency Management Services Code as presented.
Motion on the floor from trustee Rotten to approve ordinance two-two-zero-zero-two, Emergency Management Services Code, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Ward, any further discussion from board on this? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Is that a roll call vote for ordinances?
It is.
Uh, yes. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rotten?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Fenrazum?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, excellent. Uh, item number ten, Recreation Department Items, uh, ten A, Calavera Park Roof Replacement, Director Smiths.
What's that? I don't even wear hats. Uh, Calavera Park is in need of a roof replacement, and we had talked about that last year, and set aside some money this, for this year to uh, take care of that, uh, we reached out to area contractors that do roof replacements, and we had some estimates last year going into budgeting, and we budgeted twenty thousand, uh, for the work. Uh, lowest proposal came in from H and S Roofing. Uh, they also included four sheets of plywood, if needed, if there's any soft spots underneath, then they strip the shingles off, and then after that, I think it was fifty-five bucks a sheet if they have to add anything. Uh, we don't anticipate anything, but you never know until you strip the shingles off. Uh, we also did, uh, get proposals from Overhead Solutions and also Exterior Solutions, um, and H and S was the lowest. Uh, their price, uh, was sixteen thousand six hundred dollars. So, we'd be looking to approve H and S roofing to complete the Calavera roof replacement for a base price of sixteen thousand six hundred dollars plus any unforeseen repairs that may come up, uh, once they open up the roof and inspect everything around all the vents and everything else that's up there. Shouldn't be anything, but if there is, we'll report back if we find anything that's, uh, not per plan.
It's currently asphalt, uh, asphalt shingles, right? Wow, I can't say that.
Yep, so we did request pricing, uh, for steel last year, too, and it was pretty much double.
But the current one is asphalt?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. You definitely get a longer life, and like, it was about, it was about double, basically, it was forty-seven thousand. Yeah.
So, what's the, uh, shingle warranty?
This one had a ten-year, uh, they had special, Steve, why don't you help me on that one? It was like a ten-year.
It was a ten-year labor in a lifetime, limited lifetime.
Right, based on the shingles, yeah, so I don't know what, what can happen that they can say it's not a manufacturer's issue, I don't know. But there was a, a lifetime on a shingle and a ten-year replacement from the company.
All I told him was I wouldn't have to worry about it. Glad you put it in your priority. I'll be dead.
I did have our building inspector review the proposals before, uh, we brought them forward.
All right.
And that was one of the better, uh, warranties, I think, we got out of the three proposals.
I think the other ones were only one-year labors.
The other ones were either one or three, and the one did have an option for purchase an upgraded warranty package for an extra six hundred bucks for a lifetime.
Yeah, H and S has been around for quite some time, so I, um, I feel comfortable with that company. There's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to approve H and S roofing to complete the Calavera Park Roof Replacement for the base price of sixteen thousand six hundred dollars plus any unforeseen repairs that may lie under the shingles.
Motion on the floor by trustee Andrews to approve H and S roofing for the completion of the Calavera Roof Replacement at, uh, an amount of sixteen thousand six hundred dollars. And we have a second by trustee Schneider, is there any further questions, discussion with the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, um, item number eleven, discussion on future agenda items, anyone?
I just, uh, if I could just, maybe try to figure out why, uh, this is occurring. We had talked in the past about not trying to be like a Rosendale, but maybe to be upper enforcement a little bit on traffic stops and stuff like that, and I was reading through the police report, and I, I guess I would just wanna know, in what instance would you write a warning for somebody driving on a suspended license? I, I, I know it's not you, I know it's not, I'm just, when we're looking for that, I was just kinda going through that list, and I was like, wow, how would you justify a warning in that situation? Kinda going back to not wanting to pull people over and maybe taking a more lenient approach. As sick as it is, it's still a revenue source, and, uh, we have a very large contract, uh, that we pay for policing, so I would like them to pay for themselves a little bit, um, and I don't think you do that by writing warnings for driving on a suspended license. Just if, if there, anyone could answer why.
A lot, a lot of times, it's the totality of what happens, so if someone got a suspension that month or the month before, they didn't, they're not really sure what's happening, they could be a mom with kids. Very technicality, you can't let them drive off on that, so you, you'd have to look at each individual situation. But I agree with you, suspension is a suspension.
Could, could we ask, maybe what we need is a tutorial, could we ask, uh?
You're, you're gonna get a lot of officer discretion.
Oh, why, why is this coming up?
It, it was just something he saw in the report and he would like, I mean.
So, they give you that police report, it says what, it had all the, the data, you know, I was data guy, so I'm just looking through it, and I'm like, okay, well, what, you know, what stops did we have, 'cause, you know, we come back to this over and over that we're, for as much as we pay for that, uh, our annual police contract, that we're not generating the way we used to from that. Um, and then I'm looking at it, and I'm looking at, well, I wanna know all the people we just let drive away, and I don't mind if it's even, you know, ten over or fifteen over and give them a warning, or you were distracted and ran a stop sign, but it's just was a big, long list of, of warnings and.
So, this is really the area for a discussion on future agenda items and to bring forward, so is this? Could, could you think about this, could we maybe make a recommendation to administration, and perhaps we could have a tutorial or something of that? I, I know it's officer.
Right, I.
Discretion.
I agree with Mike, that I think that's a lot of what you're gonna get.
Every, every stop is unique in and of itself, so, but I agree that, you know, as bad as it is, that is a revenue stream, you're supposed to be doing that, as the, the understanding was.
Again, I'm not looking to become Rosendale.
Bring in our, um, our law enforcement officers and give out the, the number of stops, the number of citations, the number of, um, warnings, and some type of, kind of like what Chief Bertler does for his call rates of the justification.
Yeah, the justification and all that's lacking from the data they put out, I mean, they break it down to race, gender, I mean, pretty much everything. They're, they're covering all that, I mean, it's, it's data-rich, but, uh, it doesn't really say why you let somebody go, why you would, I mean, I don't know.
Especially with the suspension, that's.
Okay.
This is a valid point, though, trustee Ward.
We'll put this back to administration, and we'll try to put this into some form to come back to the board and.
I can, I can follow up with Mark and, and see if I can get an explanation on that one in particular and, and brief the board on it. And moving forward, if that's something that you wanna see, maybe a quarterly report of the police report that you, you saw that's monthly, you know, make that a quarterly report and have Mark come here and present it and just talk about, you know, what's going on in the village that's possibly, uh.
Well, I think we do that for animal control, we're.
Yeah, I would like to see that, that's an excellent idea.
Why did you go pick this squirrel up from, uh, you know, uh, someone's driveway? We don't do that, and, uh, in this case, I, I was actually hoping to see him here tonight to say.
You'll probably hear officer discretion and.
Right.
I think a quarterly report, though, is an excellent idea, I mean, we do do that for animal, animal control, why wouldn't we do that for public safety? He is on the road, he and his, his fellow officers are on the sheriff, deputy sheriffs are on the, uh, on the road constantly. Um, they are gonna have some insights into what's going on out there, and I, I'd like to learn more about that, learn more about what they're seeing in our community.
I mean, in person, 'cause I mean, I think written would be redundant, they put that police report out that they give us, uh, how often they send it, is that monthly?
Monthly.
Uh, which is very, if you ever read it, it's very in-depth, it's very, very good, but.
It is.
Um, just, like I said, when we're discussing that, and we, we have said a few times as a board that we're, we're watching this and we're looking at it as we do this contract, I just thought some of these are like, why, why would we be writing so many warnings versus actual tickets?
Is some of that confidential, though, that?
And it could be.
A public meeting?
I don't know.
The, the individual specifics. There is also different things, like, if someone gets pulled over and it's narcotics. Well, I pulled you over for the burnout headlight, you have a suspended license, and now you're carrying. Okay, I'll keep the drug charge and I'll toss out the other two. Because in hindsight, the one that really sticks is the drug charge.
Okay.
That happens quite a lot.
All right, so we'll look forward to that quarterly report and see how that shakes out. All right, any other further items?
Not to belabor and, you know, continue on the meeting, but Andy, another idea I had about the street sweepers. So we mentioned Howard. If that doesn't work out, if we could look at some intergovernmental agreement, find out what Pulaski does, what- I don't know if it's realistic to say Hobart or Bellevue. I mean, that's a distance, and I know these machines don't fly. But, you know, on a piece of equipment that we're only using maybe six weeks out of the year, if we could share that with somebody else and cut that price in half, that's a lot easier to swallow.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to do this.
So we have a motion on the floor from trustee Schneider to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Rotten. See no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried six zero, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.